Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town Council Budget Work Session Number Two. Today's date is March 6, 2012, and the time is 6:30. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is the second budget work session, and tonight we are going to be listening to the presentation from Accounts 1110, the Recreation Department. We also have the Peacedale Office Building and the Neighborhood Guild and Senior Services Funds. And then we will also talk about Account 0910, Public Works Administration, to Account 0970, Waste Water Transfer, and then Water, Waste Water and Solid Waste Funds. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
Thank you. We've got a very full agenda tonight, so we're going to try to move through as quickly as possible, but we also want to make sure that we answer any questions that may arise. The first account that we're going to start out with is the Recreation Department Administration. It's on GF20 is the detail, and it's on Narrative Page 36. It starts there. As you find those pages, the Recreation Department is really reflective of seven different function -- functional areas. General Administration, the Maintenance, the Athletics Program, Aquatics Program on Beach, Leisure Services, Activities Within the Recreation Programs, Creative Activities with Steppingstone School, and last but not least, the monies that have contributed $7,000 a year for the celebrations of the two parades. The overall Recreation Program budget for the 1213 year would be $1,365,824. The first component of that is the administration at $183,661, and that's on the GF20 for the first detailed review. That's up $6,918. Principal adjustments there are dealing with the cost of telephone increases and the Personnel Section. The administrative component is really the General Administration, which oversees each of the different programs, from the Maintenance or to the actual program activities. The Recreation Department overall would be looking at a $25,000 increase in the cost of service. However, the revenue structure, as I mentioned last night, the revenue structure will generate $31,432 more than it did in the current year. So the net effect is that even though we're increasing the expenditure statement by $25,787, we'll see a net reduction in property tax need of about $5,645. Moving through the Administration and moving on to Page 21 on the Maintenance, POCS Maintenance Division. POCS Maintenance is looking at an overall budget of $607,000, which is up about $5,559 over what the current year increases there, again, are personnel associated. And looking at materials and supplies, the cost of agricultural materials is up about $2,600. We're also seeing a decrease in the cost of utilities of around $8,000. If there's no questions, I will move on. The next program element is on the Athletics Program. The Athletics Program is made up of about 12 different components. This deals with the sports camp for the summer program, the skateboard camps, the tennis program, drop-in leagues, youth basketball, both boys and girls, instrumental basketball, instructional basketball, and the travel basketball team. There's also volleyball and softball. Also, those programs provide an overall cost of $257,058. These type of programs all come with user fees, so the participants in all of those programs are contributing to the cost of the programs. We're going to generate about $275,800 in revenue where we're spending $257,000. So there's a -- so essentially, this program is self-supporting, where it generates about $18,000 more than what it costs us to administer the program. Also, as I mentioned last night, with any of the programs in Recreation, we are forecasting different enrollments. If those enrollments don't occur, or the programs don't occur, then obviously the expenditures aren't incurred, and there would be a corresponding decrease in what the revenues are. The success rate of the programs, I think that about 80 percent of the programs that are offered are in fact implemented within the Narrative Section of the Budget Presentation. There's some explanation as to where the needs are in the Athletics Program. Again, what we're seeing is that the programs really cannot expand at this point based on the lack of space available for indoor recreation. We're also seeing similar problems as far as the field space. We have developed a great deal of outdoor recreational activity areas, but we've also had a loss in the availability of field space that we at one time used at URI. There needs to be additional discussions with URI to see if we can get back on some of those fields, particularly with lacrosse programs, because the other thing that the Recreation Department does is it coordinates a lot of the private leagues that if they weren't there, the service demands would be placed on the Recreation Department, whether it's little league, whether it's lacrosse, or soccer programs. So this is a key program. It's up $14,500, but again, it's up because we're anticipating utilization of the program, and if the utilization occurs, it will take in more money than it actually costs to run that program. The next component is the Aquatics Program, and this really has two specific program elements. One is the Beach Program itself, and the second is the programs that are run at the beach, such as the Surf Program that's instructional. So that program itself is going to cost $102,000 in the 1213 year. The program, while it'll cost $102,000, will generate about $106,000 from either the beach fees or from the self-supporting classes that are run on the beach itself. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the Leisure Services Program. Leisure Services, just like the Athletics Program, is a combination of many individual program activities. This is where we provide the funding for the concerts that occur on the Green, the Fourth of July celebration that we contribute toward the fireworks. Fourth of July, for instance, will cost about $26,500. Will only generate about $12,600, so that's one of the loss leaders, but it's a major program activity for the community that's administered through the Recreation Department. There's also a number of classes that are offered, Discovery Camps during the summer, Adventure Camp during the summer, and those are the programs that assist our residents, not with daycare, but to be able to provide adequate activities for the children during the summer months. There's also dollars set aside for the Easter egg hunt for the preschool programs, the pumpkin celebration, as well as the Nature Center. The Nature Center came up the other night. Nature Center, right now, we're forecasting about $10,000 worth of programming through that facility at Ace upon, and that program will also be a loss leader, will lose about $4,500. Overall, the cost of the Leisure Services at $128,998, it will take in revenues of $116,000. So this is one of the programs that property taxes offset the cost of operating those programs. We move on. Creative Activities is the program that we operate as a preschool. This is a licensed preschool with the state of Rhode Island. It's operated at the original kindergarten of the Steppingstone. We have had capital budget items that have dealt with restoration of that building. Overall, program is going to cost about $79,500, and I'd ask Terry to address this, as far as there's a number of different programs that are operated here, possibly she can give you a better insight than I could on it.
Sure. The programs at Steppingstone include the preschool program, which is run during the school year, four-year-olds, and some three-year-olds. We have a split three-four classroom as well. We also offer preschool activities, including dinosaur discovery, summer programs, safety first programs for the preschoolers that run during the summertime and the off-season of the school year. But essentially, Steppingstone is focused on preschool-aged activities.
Yes, Polly?
Polly? Are we able to accept all the students who apply to that program, Terry?
Within the past two years, we have, although historically, there has been a demand at Steppingstone. We're at capacity this year due to the closure of two preschools locally. We anticipate being at capacity next year. It's very -- it's in demand.
I have a question as well. I believe that the School Department conducted a meeting and invited all of the preschools, and was Steppingstone represented at that meeting?
Yes, we were.
Okay, great.
Kelly Larleman and I were in attendance.
Great. Going back to the budget message for a minute, I just wanted to point out that one of the things Terry has pointed out in that is that for the second year, we've had a record number of, in fact, 735 children aged five through 18 are registered for the basketball program alone. And, you know, when we look at the gym facility that we've talked about for several years, and we've continued to defer the construction of that facility, we're seeing that the need still exists for us to be able to have greater accessibility to indoor space. On Page 37, there's also reference to the field constraints that right now are occurring. We can't expand the Adult Softball League because at this point, we do not have the field space where we can have more teams to be able to participate in that program. So that is a concern, and the third concern is that, as we talked about in capital budget, we do have to continue to put the plans together on the retreat of the Pavilion from its existing location at the Town Beach. So I think those are some important highlights that are contained within the message. Also, as far as that, the Nature Center is concerned, as referenced, there were 60 programs that were run with 275 participants over the past year at that facility. And we're also establishing new partnerships with different environmental groups to be able to take active use of that resource. If there's no questions, we'll leave Recreation and go to the tab on the Peacedale Office Building. Terry, you want to present on this one?
The total operating budget for the Peacedale Office Building is $91,925, which reflects an increase of approximately $1,600. We're projecting revenue at $93,163, reflecting a $329 increase. Currently, there are eight tenants in the building. At the time of budget development, there were nine tenants. We've since lost a tenant and are in the process of negotiating for a ninth tenant. We did renew two leases of current tenants for five-year terms this past year. The remaining leases for the other tenants are up in 2014 and 2015, and we anticipate -- we have quite a list of long-term tenants that have been in the building for some time, so we anticipate continuing, like Steve Beekman and South County Children and Family and Phoenix House, those are some of our tenants in the Peacedale Office Building at this time. Just in the past year, we've had some improvements in the building, including the chimneys were repaired on the Peacedale Office Building to stop some leaking that had occurred into the museum, and also the third-floor exercise room. So we've continued to keep up with building improvements between using the fund balance and also our building improvement line item.
Yeah, right now, the fund balance, just to back up for a minute, we bought the -- as the town bought the building back in 1983, we've used about 90 percent of the space there for commercial rentals. At this point, we've got about $245,000 that's available within the undesignedated fund balance for the Peacedale Office Building. Those monies are used exclusively for PDOB as far as building improvements are concerned. We'll see in some years where our capital program would be $25,000 or $30,000. Those would be years where we would see expenses in excess of revenue, and we would use money from the fund balance to be able to keep the building up. As Terry mentioned, we had difficulty with flashing on the chimneys. That was an unexpected expenditure that has recently occurred, that in fact, I think Council of Ward on that was a couple of meetings ago. But this is one of those programs where we wanted to ensure that it stayed self-supporting and that it would be able to support the building renovations that have been necessary. I think as all will recognize, we've replaced heating systems, electrical systems, roofs, done the repointing on the building. So at this point, the building is in very good condition, but a building that was constructed back in 1856 takes a lot of tenderloin care. So as we go forward, one of the visions was that as the activities' demands increased in the Guild, that we would then be able to move some of those program activities, which we have, over to Peacedale Office Building. If we want to take additional space, we would just take it out of the rental agreements that are have -- that are there and convert that into use space. At one time, the music program was getting exceedingly large, and we were looking at possibly taking one of the floors and making that into a music center. At this point, the space at the Guild appears adequate for the program levels that are being run, and so at this point, there's no demand for us to convert the existing commercial space into a use space for the Leisure Service Programs. Any questions?
I just have -- I have a question. The people that were renting that space before, that was the end of their lease. We're not still charging them until we get it rented, are we?
No.
No. It was the end of their lease?
No, it wasn't, but we're not charging them. That was a Town Commission. It was the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention.
Gotcha.
Their budget, they were under some severe budgetary constraints, and they've since relocated to the high school.
High school, right. Which I think is good. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the Guild. Want to start them off, Terry?
The total proposed operational budget for the Neighborhood Guild is $833,154, representing a decrease of approximately $1,000 or 0.12 percent. The Guild will remain self-sufficient with the combined projected revenues in the amount of $833,167 from programming and trust funds. As noted on the Administration Funding Account, you'll notice that it has increased by $2,768, primarily that's due to personnel increases. We have had a decrease in our utilities cost due to the new electric contract. You'll notice that it's down by $3,700. We've also got a decrease in our heating fuel. Based on a four-year average, we've determined that $15,000 should be sufficient for the national natural gas heat at the Guild. One other item of note is under signs and striping, which has gone up $600. We're intending on being able to purchase a new sign for the Neighborhood Guild as that seems -- some people miss our sign on Columbia Street, which is relatively small, so we're looking at being able to establish a larger sign that's more visible.
I think something that I'd like to point out is that the objective that we've had in developing the budget for the Neighborhood Guild is to one-present on Page GN4 what the operational expense is to maintain the building, and that cost comes in at about $441,000. Debt service, we keep as a separate line item at 57. So the overall building itself, just to open the doors and to keep the program in place with insurances, heating, electricity, is about a half a million dollars. What our objective is, is to use the Guild Trust Funds as well as the operating program balance to support a lion's share of what the cost is of putting the facility in place. The reason we want to do that is so that the programs that are operated through the Guild itself are in fact not going to have to pay for the overhead of having the building -- to pay for the building. That way, the only thing that they're going to have to recover cost on is the actual cost of running the programs. The programs that are broken out in the Guild on Page GN5 show the different functional areas. The Seniors Program, the Youth Program, Music, Adults, and the Arts Program. All of those programs have their own revenue centers associated with them, so that what we're looking to do is, at this point, we've got about 43 percent of the operating budget that comes from the operation -- from the Guild Trust Funds or operating revenues that are available, or investment income, or reinvested income. Those are the dollars that are available to pay for the debt and the capital costs. But each of the revenues that come in from the front desk or the Senior Program go against what the program costs are for running those activities. Again, what we're looking at with revenues for the Guild that come from programs is about $372,000 out of the total of 833, and that's down about $12,000 from where it was last year, because we've seen some drop-off in terms of program participation on several of the programs that are here. That's not to say that the Guild is idle. In fact, at this point, there was over 400 classes that were offered through the Guild during the current year, and those ranged anywhere from art programs to community education or sports, fitness, or special events. We can go into any level of detail that Council may wish on any of the programs. The front desk is broke out as a separate line item because that is an administrative overhead to operate the building, and that's shown on Page Five. The Arts Program itself, at this point, will cost $54,000, but it'll generate $62,000 in income. The Music Program is another case of spending about $95,000 but taking in about $108,000. So you can see what we are doing is being able to run community programs at a cut-rate price because we're providing the building space for those activities to occur. Senior Programs amount to a projected $65,000 next year, and those really are bus trips or van trips to various places, whether it's to Peacock, or whether it's to Boston to a hockey game, or a Celtics game, or whether it's to New York to see the Rockettes. Those bus trips are self-supporting. In fact, we project that we'll make about $5,000 more than what the actual cost of that program is. Any of the excess revenue that's there, that's the money that's necessary to compensate for those building costs that aren't being paid for from the revenue generated from the trust funds themselves. Adult Programs, they range from line dancing to creative writing, to senior exercise, to fitness and zumba, and any number of things that you can think of. Tai Chi is also one of the big things that I think that Terry's teaching that this year.
Relax. Those hips.
So those are the type of programs that are operated through the Guild proper. Again, what we want to do here is to have any of the programs that are going to be indoor recreational or leisure service associated, regardless of the population group, from seniors to preschoolers, that would be operated within the Guild confines, where we can provide the necessary floor space for them without major cost incurred for them to be able to offer those programs. Most of our programs that are here are also run through third-party vendors. They are private contractors that receive a percentage, I believe it's a 70 percent split, with the Guild getting 30 percent, and the instructor getting 70 percent of the revenues that are generated from the program. So if somebody teaches creative writing, and they have 10 students, and they're paying on a per-class basis, the distribution is on a 70-30 split for that program, and that's how we run most of the programs. There's not -- there may be a few that are out of the 70-30 realm, but most of them are Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the Senior Program. Senior Program starts on S1, under the Senior Tab. Karen, you want to come up too? On S1, we talk about the Seniors Program. We operate four different functional programs within the Seniors Program. One is the Transportation Program, which is up about $2,800. Those costs really are going to be gas-associated and employees. The Nutrition Program, which is run within the Senior Center itself, the Senior Center Activity Center itself, and the Adult Day Services Program, which is operated out of the old Post Road location. That's the facility that's now under construction for an addition, a thousand-square-foot addition that will provide a multipurpose room for that facility. It will not expand the number of client base that we're going to see, which is hopefully staying at around 18, but it will provide greater flexibility to the staff to be able to have better utilization of the space that's in place. The program at $752,610 also receives direct support from two neighboring communities. Narragansett contributes financially for activities in the Nutrition Program and the Senior -- and the Adult Day Services Program and the Senior Center. So they're involved with three of the four components. The only thing they're not involved with would be transportation. Town of North Kingstown also is a participant in our programs, where they have resident population that uses the Adult Day Services Program. population that uses the adult day services program. The program revenues from South Kingston, we're looking at about $351,498 will be necessary out of the general fund to be transferred to the seniors program for our property tax share, if you will, of operating all of our senior programs, the four programs. On page two, we talk about Narragansett's contribution. Narragansett will be contributing over $100,000 to the seniors program by the three categories of nutrition, day services, or general participation in the center itself. North Kingston will have approximately $35,000 that they will contribute to the adult day services program based on the number of their residents that are client-based in that program. We're also anticipating state grants and federal assistance to the different, to those various programs in the amount of about, almost $50,000. So, this is a very active program, but it's also a program which has several partners to offset what the cost is for South Kingston. I think it's an excellent program in terms of being able to provide regional services at a cut-rate price. I wanted to give Terri and Karen an opportunity to talk about the successes of the program and where they see things going over the next year or so. So, with that, I'll turn it over for you folks.
Thank you, Steve. I'll start with transportation. The transportation division consists of one van that currently transports approximately 200 seniors to and from the senior center, as well as to a number of different sites throughout the town, grocery shopping, hairdressers, nursing home visits, pharmacies. It's a critical service in that it allows these people to maintain their independence in the community, not having to rely on family members, or worse, having to become institutionalized simply because they can't get around. We are anxiously awaiting the delivery of our new van, which was ordered, and we expect anytime this month to come in, in which case, we will then be able to also reinstitute our day trip program, which, with the current van. The day trip program ended when we transferred over. We took on the ride responsibilities of transporting seniors to the senior center for the meal site, rather than having them being charged $2 each way to get to the center and home again. So, it does open up a whole bunch of possibilities for us in terms of what else we can offer seniors who are without transportation. Right now, we have the van at a cost of $90,255, is what we're paying for the new van, and we're hoping to be able to get good use out of that. We've also budgeted a little bit more on the part-time driver so that we would be able to pull someone in and have day trip programs with the spare van.
Terri, I just have a quick question. On the transportation, with some of the people with disabilities living in, say, Indian Run, are they able to also use this transportation, or is it only for the seniors?
It's senior-specific. However, I believe the Riptoflex program, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, allows for transport of disabled individuals who are under 60 years of age.
Also, if they're, if underage disabled are coming to the nutrition program, that is, they're allowed to use the senior van because of the state law that we have to cover, we should be covering their participation in the nutrition program because that's intended for, that's as determined by social security. If they're disabled under social security, they can use the senior van to come to the senior center. For shopping purposes, they would, Riptoflex van would probably better. There's also another van for disabilities if they need wheelchair accessibility.
Thank you.
Speaking about the nutrition program, just to give people an idea, we're talking about serving between $11,500 and $12,000 meals a year at the center over the course of the year. And the distribution on that, about $7,300 or $7,400 are from South Kingston, Narragansett's about $2,700. The rest are from other communities that have use of our facility. As a nutrition center, our doors are open to any person that is either disabled or a senior citizen for those services. And certainly, we make them feel welcome. In fact, I think in the last year, there's almost 1,400 people, or meals that have been served to people outside of the Narragansett/South Kingston area. So, the program continues to be vibrant, and also, it's important to note that the senior center also serves Meals on Wheels is the distribution point. The food is prepared through West Bay Collaborative. It comes to the center, it's served for lunch, as well as the volunteers that deliver the Meals on Wheels leave from the senior center. So, we provide an availability of a distribution center for that program as well.
Kathy?
Karen, has there been any reductions in the Meals on Wheels this year? I work between two states, or is it Massachusetts that's had a big cut on that program?
Actually, tomorrow, my director's meeting is going to be addressing this, but for South Kingston and Narragansett, it's only a four-day delivery, as opposed to in the past, it was five days. But they're sending a cold meal for their Friday, for Friday, they're condensing the drivers and the transportation costs from, because it's one person, one group is delivering the meals for the state. So, they've, I guess, to cut back on their transportation dollars that they're sending five meals out in four days, so.
Massachusetts just had a big significant cut, I think, of the Meals on Wheels program up there, so I didn't know if that translated down here, or that's probably what we're doing, the four versus five.
I think that's what they're trying to help with that. Also, I'd like to say that I just did a comparison of the meals program for the past six months versus last year, during the same time period, and usage is up 641 meals, so it's definitely increasing. And the same with senior center participation, just in the past two months, usually the winter months are a little bit quieter as far as new participants, but just in the past two months, it goes right with the census figures that we've had 62 new members sign up to be members of the senior center. So, and I believe they're coming from the Wakeville Meadows, some of them, the South County Commons Apartments and Condos, and just other seniors relocating to be closer to their children. So, we are booming.
I did also wanted to mention that the Town Public Works and Public Grounds divisions have also opened up the trail going up toward the Commons on the town's property. So, that's a walking path now that's been cleared and is being used quite frequently from people. There's this beautiful walking area. I think the distance on it, Rex, how long is that trail at this point?
I'd say about a little over quarter mile.
So, it's also something that dovetails into either the athletic fields that we have or with the seniors program in terms of being able to provide another activity for the active population. We can move on from the nutrition program and go into the adult day services at this point. Again, with the adult day services program, what we do is we do a cost distribution between the communities based on what the average number of client days have been over a four-year period. A few years ago, we used to look at the last 12 months, and what we saw was that there was erratic ups and downs as far as what the share contributions were going to be. So, what we wanted to do is to develop that, hopefully into a five-year term as we go forward. That way, the contribution requirements should stay relatively stable. The difficulty is that if you have somebody from a community that is coming five days a week versus somebody who's one day a week, we need to look at the client days rather than the actual clients, where they hail from. The program generates funds, in some cases, from the state of Rhode Island as an offset to the cost of the daycare service, as well as the participants paying themselves. Whatever doesn't come in through either the state reimbursement or through the client payment, which is on a sliding scale, is then the responsibility of the three communities. And those costs are distributed accordingly based on what the client days have been over that four-year period. On page S8, there's an explanation as to what the actual number of client days have been. We're talking about going from a high of almost 38, 100 days, to what's, we're predicting this year at around 3,600, 3,600 next year as well. I think the more important number there is that we're talking about 42 different individuals and really 42 families that are impacted by this program, because this provides the respite care for a family more so than the care for the specific client themselves. The overall cost on the program is at $314,000. It's up about $8,000 over what the current year is. Again, even with the expansion that's occurring, there's no anticipated increase in the number of clients that we will be servicing. If we jump to the next plateau, which we don't have the space to do, we would be required under the state regulations to have additional full-time staff. And that's not something that we see as being a necessity at this point. We're being able to service the client base that we have. I'm not sure whether you've got a waiting list at this point or not, Terri?
It fluctuates. We may have a waiting list for one or two days. It's something that is very unstable based on our client, basically their health. We have clients that may go out for a while because they need rehab or some health maintenance, but we hold their day and their space for approximately a month, maybe six weeks before contacting to see if that's something that we should be looking at opening up. So, it does fluctuate. Right now, we do not have a long waiting list, but we're hoping that once we announce the opening of our new expanded facility space, that it'll raise awareness in the community that the adult daycare exists and it's there for our community members.
Carol? Terri, does, do the South Kingston residents have a first option to get into the program, or does it just, based on need, whoever, from whatever community?
Contributing communities would be considered first if we had to cross that bridge. At the current time, we're not in that predicament. So, if North Kingston, Narragansett, or South Kingston residents were to seek entrance into the day program, that they would be considered. But we've never, we've not been in that position. In 2010, we had a couple of days where we maxed at 20 clients. So, that's where we're at now. I mean, we're not at 20 clients now.
So, you don't have to turn anyone away at this point?
Not based on our numbers, no. They're assessed in other ways based on their functional levels.
Right.
As to whether or not they're appropriate for daycare.
Thanks.
If there are no questions, we'll move on to the senior center budget. Senior center budgets on page S14. The overall budget for the year is up $12,000 to $269,769. Let Karen address it.
I'm sorry, before Karen jumps in, I'd just like to go over the numbers a little bit. The operational budget for the center is $269,796, which represents about a 4.6% increase in the overall budget, mainly due to personnel increases and the need for, under professional services, additional funds. We're looking at replacing some of our rooftop units for the HVAC system. We've recently replaced two, and there's five others. The building is 11 years old. They are starting to wear and break down, and we came across that this year with two units failing within the past five months or so. We have an increase in fuel costs of about $1,500 and an increase in hiring for new instructors of about $2,800. We're looking to be able to implement some new programs in collaboration with the rec division for seniors. But I'd like to hand it off to Karen so she can get into some of the detail on the center activity.
Well, we're working with a lot of wonderful volunteers that help us out every day to run creative programs. We've instituted a couple of new art programs. We have a retired physician that's doing an art appreciation class for us. We have taken on the zumba groups. That seems to be a very popular activity. Conversation groups that sometimes we can hear straight across the atrium if somebody doesn't agree. We're having computer classes ongoing, digital camera classes, anything that the need seems to be. We're trying to keep current with the baby boomers are looking for. And so, they seem to want a lot of exercise, so we have just about two or three exercise groups, some form of exercise, every day. So, everybody wants to stay ahead, and I'm excited about the new connection to, almost full connection to the Commons. I think that will open up another exercise opportunity for people. And we're just, we're using the bond still with, for quilt-making and knitting group. We have about 18 knitters every Monday morning to, they make things for themselves, or they make baby caps, caps for people that are undergoing chemotherapy and donate to the hospital. We have our quilt makers for the children's quilts in that building. And just about any hour of the day, we have activities going on, just one after the other. We have a doctor's practice book with eight categories for all the rooms that we can fill, and they're being filled. And we're also working with the library to have a book club once a month. We're involved with URI Department of Kinesiology to offer a Tai Chi class, and it's also part of a study that they're working on, so that's exciting to be part of that. This is part two of the study that we're, they had another one last year for regular exercise, but this year, it's Tai Chi. Working with the College of Nursing and Department of Gerontology. So, we have a lot of URI, College of Pharmacy as well. So, we have a lot of URI involvement too. So, we're very fortunate to be in this community that we have such wonderful resources.
The mention was made of the cost instructors being up $2,880. I want to make sure that people are aware that that is on a fee-based system, so there's a revenue offset for that $4,000 that comes in for the cost instructors. So, again, it's a case where we can look at the bottom-line expenditures, but bottom-line expenditures are not really increasing to the degree that the actual cash dollars are if they're being offset by the revenue sources. Any other questions on seniors? If not, we'll move on to, we're going to go back in time, and we're going to go to the general fund, and we're going to deal with the public services department, starting with the engineering division. And that's on page N30 of the document.
I just want to thank Terri and thank Karen. Much appreciated. And hopefully, the new grandchild is doing well.
And on the numbers detail, it's on GF17. So, if we start with that, the first public services department is for the general administration. general administration. We're looking at a, uh, program cost up forty-four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. As John points out in the narrative, uh, a good deal of the work is doing the engineering and the pre-planning for construction jobs that are going to be, uh, let by the town, as well as meeting stormwater requirements and dealing with, uh, uh, pollution issues and the state of Rhode Island. The infrastructure improvements ranging from road resurfacing to reconstruction of roads, drainage, bridge rehabilitation, I guess we could add there, and replacement, uh, and, you know, culvert repair. In fact, just to mention, uh, we are expecting that on Stony Fort Road, that we will have to close that road for a couple of days in advance of the reconstruction that's got to occur, uh, later this fall, uh, to allow Public Works to be able to replace a large culvert under the road there. Uh, there's no way for us to keep one-way traffic there, but these are the types of issues that we're dealing with. That department then is responsible for posting signs as well as providing specific notice to all of the property owners along that stretcher road. There's really no changes in, uh, in this department, uh, budget from what it has been in past years. John does provide some detail as far as the amount of roads that we're dealing with crack seal or stone sealing on. We're doing still about seven miles on stone seal a year. This is something that, uh, we've talked about, that we're hoping to expand upon. If we have a, a, a warm winter and we don't spend everything that's in, in the Public Works, uh, budget for, uh, snow removal and, uh, salt and sand acquisitions, then we will again be recommending transfers to the, uh, Public Works Improvement Fund to allow for accelerated work in the road reconstruction, uh, area. I think as we start to see more road reconstruction work, we may act, have to look at third-party services on some of the engineering to get the designs ready, uh, to get that work, uh, done on a timely basis. If there's no questions on administration, we can move into the, uh, Streets and Highway Division. Streets and Highway, we're looking at about a thirty-nine thousand, three-hundred-dollar increase, uh, total budget of one-million-seven-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. We have decreases that are in, expected in the, uh, chemicals and gases. This is principally the dollars that we would be spending if we were using salt on a continuing basis during this winter, where we should have adequate, uh, resources available by the end of the year so that we won't need to buy as much, uh, next year. That line item may, in fact, have to go back up in the following year's budget based on the severity of next winter that occurs. There's little changes in the contractual services. I would note that the professional services, uh, line two-ninety shows, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. This is, uh, the principal funding source for the various, uh, road improvements or infrastructure improvements that the, uh, department, uh, makes during the course of the year. Of that amount, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of the three-hundred-and-seventy goes into road improvements, whether it's road improvements, sidewalk improvements, uh, drainage improvements. These are the, uh, operating, uh, funds to be able to maintain existing roads that are not, uh, set for, uh, major capital improvements. John, you want to talk about, uh, the stone seal program and, uh, the amount of roads we expect to do?
Yep. Uh, stone sealing, we have of that three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars or so, one-hundred-and-eighty-five is designated for stone sealing.
You got to use that mic a little better.
Sorry. Of, of the three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand for infrastructure work, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand's designated for stone sealing, thirty-eight-thousand for crack sealing, and about twenty-four-thousand for, uh, road striping. As the manager indicated, we carry money each year for sidewalk replacement. Uh, the upcoming year, we're proposing eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred. Those funds we, unfortunately, in the past, is, we use for any overruns, uh, with, uh, winter storms, sand and salt. Fortunately, I can tell you, as of today, we've only expended about twenty-six percent of the winter budget, which is good news as compared to last year. I think we were at like a hundred-and-eighty-three percent. So we will, it looks like, have some funding left if the weather continues as is. Um, but as the manager indicated, unfortunately, it's a very volatile market for any of our asphalt pricing. We can get done approximately about seven mile, seven miles of roads, fourteen lane miles with a stone sealing for the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars.
And this is in addition to the capital budget where you budget five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year for road reconstruction, uh, activities. Of that five-fifty, a hundred of it's set aside for, uh, TMDL implementation work, but the other four-fifty is for us to be able to deal with roads similar to, uh, Stony Fort that'll be done hopefully this, uh, this summer. You want to go over the equipment needs that you have within the, uh, program this year, John?
Uh, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, much of the equipment we have is, is very high maintenance. Uh, the sweeper, the grader, the, the vac truck, they're all, you know, relatively high-maintenance vehicles. And the, the dump truck fleet that we have, those are the ones that we do the sanding with because of the corrosive nature of the salt. Uh, that's unfortunately a very high maintenance as well. So, eh, we, we try very hard to, to hit the maintenance costs each year. Sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not. It all depends on, you know, each year when, how the equipment is, is faring, which can vary from year to year.
Is there any questions on the streets budget? If there's not, we'll, uh, move on to the tree program. The tree program, we're looking at about a five-thousand-dollar increase. This is also another very volatile account because based on weather and windstorms, we see, uh, a greater need on professional services. This is, the professional services here would be us hiring, uh, third-party arborists to, uh, be able to take down trees or damaged, uh, limbs. When we look at this, uh, the expenditure history on this over the last couple of years has been, uh, up and down. We've spent, uh, in some cases, up to forty-five-thousand dollars on, uh, dealing with, uh, with tree damage. We also have agricultural supplies. This is just, uh, a paltry amount of a thousand dollars it's proposed to, uh, be able to buy, uh, replacement, uh, tree stock for, uh, those tree, uh, for areas where, uh, street trees can be planted and successfully maintained. This budget could, uh, could be fifty-thousand dollars because what we do is we have to keep an inventory of the trees that need to be maintained. Uh, and what we will do is if we get a list of ten or twelve trees, we'll put out a single contract. We have a tree warden. The tree warden, uh, will do emergency work, and we will pay him, uh, or his crew on a, uh, per-hour basis for emergency work. Work that's routine or then that can be scheduled. If we had ten trees that were, uh, scheduled for, uh, maintenance or, or takedown, we would take that through a municipal contract so that arborists would be able to bid, uh, bid those projects. If there's no questions, we can move on to the, uh, street lighting. The street lighting budget, uh, is forecast at a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. The reason for the decline there is that we're expecting, uh, the reduction in the energy costs. The council of water, the contract at the, uh, point oh-six, seven, one-one cents, down from, uh, nine-nine. So it's about a thirty-two percent reduction in what the supply cost is. Supply is about sixty-five percent of what the electric bill is. So we're expecting that we'll see a sizable reduction in what our street lighting costs will be. Also, we're taking into consideration here a request to downsize the number of lamps within the community to lower wattage that will also save money, uh, for the community. Unfortunately, we're not sure when National Grid will get to the, uh, work order that has been prepared by the town. Uh, I'm not sure how long ago you submitted that to them, John?
They've actually started on it, which is promising. So, there's a, obviously, there's a reduction in the, uh, power cost, but there's also a reduction in the fixture cost that, uh, the lease cost, I guess, if you will, from National Grid. So there's two, two-part savings on that.
This account, we're going to have to watch because since we've, uh, changed over with the supply company with, uh, direct energy, we haven't seen the electric bills to see, uh, whether or not they're going to track in the manner in which we expected them to. But we, uh, do expect that, uh, we should be in that, uh, that area. If we're not, uh, certainly we'll have to address it during the, uh, the course of the year. The final account as far as the general fund, public services, is the transfer to the wastewater fund.
Carol has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to know if these, uh, lower wattage bulbs, were they LED bulbs? Is that what we're changing?
They're all sodium vapor, I believe.
The what?
High-pressure sodium vapor. They're not LEDs.
Oh.
Yep.
I don't know of those. Thanks.
So kind of no.
That technology hasn't, hasn't got that far yet for street lighting. It's, I think it's in its infancy. From what I understand, it's very expensive, so it hasn't made it, uh, street lining technology yet.
I, I just have a few questions with some analog, analogies here. ROW?
R, uh, right-of-way?
I'm sorry, what is?
Right-of-way?
Right-of-way and OSWM?
On-site wastewater management.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
In the narrative on, uh, page, uh, N twenty-four, we talk about the wastewater transfer for the, uh, OWTS. Essentially, the employees within the wastewater division are managing for us the onsite wastewater treatment system. That is the, uh, the system where we have required the inspections of all septic systems in the community. As of this year, all seven, uh, sections of the town have had, uh, notices, mandatory notices for pumping and, uh, and inspection. Since the services are, are provided through the utilities division for wastewater, yet wastewater money is generated from the user base, and obviously, if you have a septic system, you're not paying into the wastewater, uh, fund. This money reimburses the fund for the personnel services that are necessary to manage the, uh, the onsite wastewater management program for the town. We're projecting ninety-two-hundred dollars to be transferred. This will be both the personnel cost and, in fact, something that I'm looking at today is that we've got to do new software upgrades on the existing system, uh, that maintains the records so that we can, uh, have better control over whether people are, uh, are ready for re-inspections or whether or not the, uh, notice of violations that are provided have been acted on. Just some background on that program. John, can you walk them through, uh, the notice as well as the, uh, up to and including the, the NOV?
Yeah. Typically, what happens is we send everybody a first notice, and they're, I believe they have forty-five days to complete an inspection. Once, uh, that inspection's done, they hire a third-party contractor who's licensed by the town. We get a copy of the inspection notice, the property owner gets one, and the inspector keeps one. Based upon those findings, the inspector, either they pass, and then it's, it's time in the future at a date certain by the inspector, they're due for either a re-inspection or a pumping, or they fail. Now, if they fail with a cesspool, we then send them an NOV, or we issue an NOV, we record the NOV in the land record evidence files, and then send them the NOV. And they have five years for a cesspool, or one year if the property transfers ownership to satisfy the NOV with a new system. If it's a failed septic system, again, we generate an NOV, record the NOV, and then they have eighteen months to satisfy the NOV for, typically with septic system, it's a failed component, it's not the whole system that failed. And then once the NOV's been satisfied with a, what's called a certificate of conformance from DEM, we then release the NOV, and that completes the process.
Okay, so at this point, uh, we're, we're now going back to the first section and determining whether or not there's re-inspections that are going to be necessary, or whether there's been compliance with the notices that have been issued. But again, remember that when we issue a notice of violation, a notice of violation is recorded in the town clerk's office. If that property is to change hands, the, uh, NOV is going to be found in the, in the title search itself, and the corrections have got to be made.
Do we have a program to help people with the failed, uh, septic systems? We do, don't we?
Yeah, there's a, a C-Slip Community Septic System Loan Program that's managed through the, uh, Ryan Housing Mortgage Finance Corporation.
And that's not based on income. That is, anybody will qualify for the loans under the program. What's the interest rate on that, Al?
Two percent.
Two percent. Up to a maximum of thirty-thousand dollars. So the, the program is available, how much do we have in loans outstanding at this point?
Over a million dollars. Um, let's see, probably about one-point-two million, and we have thirty for about another nine-hundred thousand at this stage.
So, I mean, the program's being used, but it also is, is providing a great deal of correction with the ISDS systems in town. And that's important for us as far as accomplishment when we report on, uh, compliance with, uh, with pollution controls for the TMDLs.
John, how many notices of violation do you have outstanding right now?
Well, that's actually, we're trying to extract those numbers from the database we have, um, which we're having difficulty with. Uh, I'm going to say we've, just, just to ballpark, we've probably between cesspools and septic systems, it's probably in the five to six-hundred, I would think, townwide, somewhere in that order.
Wow.
And, you know, many people have replaced their systems, since we've had, you know, reasonably good compliance. And some of these, uh, systems, especially down in the south end of town, are not cheap.
Right.
Because they're, they have to be a D-Nite system. So those are the ones that are, you know, rather pricey.
So would the, uh, the loan program for thirty thousand, would that cover it?
Uh, it, you know, I think, from what I understand, you know, some of the prices have come down somewhat versus what, what they were, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, but you're probably looking upwards of thirty-thousand dollars for a D-Nite system.
Wow.
Yep, they're, they are expensive.
Hmm.
We recognize that there's been over, there's over sixty-three-hundred systems that have been out for inspection to the, uh, you know, maybe a ten percent factor that, uh, has received some type of notification for improvements. Those wouldn't just be cesspools, they would be, uh, systems that needed upgrade.
Kathy?
So, John, you're saying that some, most of the times when they fail, that it's not the whole system. It's, is there a particular part of the system that seems to be?
Well, I mean, this is for septic systems now. Cesspools, they, they're failed by definition.
Failed, they fail, right.
Septic system is usually a D-box or, you know, surprisingly, there are a lot of metal tanks in the ground, metal septic tanks instead of the concrete tanks. And obviously metals, it's a corrosive environment.
Right, right.
So a lot of the times, the baffles, there's a baffle inside that'll, that'll rust off. And then usually, it's just the tank that has to be replaced. But, you know, it's important, no matter what system it is, it just, if you, if you pump it periodically before the, you know, the tank gets too full and the solids go into the leach field, that's, that's what usually does these systems in. So if they're maintained, they, you know, they've got an indefinite life.
And how often are we, because I have, my neighborhood, they're all the, the septics. And I feel like it's like every year we're getting the inspection notice, but what is, is it every two?
Well, the inspe, well, it's up, it's up to the inspector. Your inspector, when they did your system, you know, again, it's, it's performance-based, so a house that has one person's going to be different than a house that has five people. So it's really, and that's the inspector's judgment, that's what they went to school for, is to be able to determine based upon the sludge depth that you have, when the next time is. So it, it varies from house to house, based upon use.
And inspector to inspector.
And inspector doing inspection. I didn't say that.
Right, right. Okay. Thanks, John.
If there's no questions, we'll go from, uh, from that account, and we'll go into the Water Enterprise Fund, and that's under the, uh, Water tab. Give me a minute to catch up to it. The Water Enterprise Fund is for the town's water system. The town's water system is inclusive of the South Shore Water System and the Middle Bridge Water System. I think everybody knows the system in town is the, uh, United Water, which is regulated through the Public Utilities Commission. Other water district that exists would be Kingston, uh, Kingston Water. Other water district that exists would be Kingston Water. Indian Lake Shores has a fire district or a water district, but it buys all of its waters directly through the United System. So the independent systems that exist right now, the only independent system in town that's using its own wells would be Kingston. So the South Shore and Middle Bridge Systems, we have been acquiring water from United Water now for several years. In fact, that goes back to 2002. The budget for next year is about $995,000. It's up about $31,000 over what the current year program is. Question was asked as far as the meter system. The metering system was installed in 2008. It was a program that cost us $652,000 to replace all of the meters. That information's on page W 2, and we're paying back that bond requirement over a five-year term. In fact, I think that 1213 is the last year of the bonding on that. So as of 1213, that $85,000 cost will drop off in the 1314 year. For the 2012-2013 year, we're looking for a rate increase from $175 per unit to $178 per unit. Unit at $178 would also provide for the first 5,000 cubic feet of water use. Any water used in excess of 5,000 cubic feet would then be charged at an excess rate. The excess rate for the 1213 year is $2.91 per 100 cubic feet. We're proposing that that would be increased to $2.97, or a six-cent increase in the, for the 1314-year billing. But again, as I mentioned last night, we set what the rate is for excess for the 1213 year at $2.97. People will know what that fee will be, but they will not be billed at that rate. They will be billed in the 1314 year for the water they consumed in 1213. So it's a year in the rears, but what we do is we want to put the fee structure in place so that in advance of the year, so somebody can't say, "Well, gee, if I knew you were going to put the rate up, I would have used less water." This way, we can announce what the fees will be for the 1314-year billing because, and it needs to be done before July 1st of 2012. So the fee increases that we're looking for is 175 to 178, and a six-cent increase on the excess fee. The additional unit cost right now is at $75. We would also propose that for the 1213 year, that that be set at $77. The increases are necessary to keep up with what the cost of operations are. We're also seeing, this will be the first year that we expect to see the rate increase from United Water on the water purchase that we have. They have gone through the Public Utilities Commission at this point, and we believe that the rate increase will probably be in the area of, I think, about a 20% increase, John.
So actually, it went into effect as of January 12th.
They did put it through. What fee increase?
For the wholesale rate, it's 19.35%.
So we're seeing about a 20% increase, but remember, there hasn't been a fee increase since 2002 when we started using the system. So it has been anticipated that it would go into place. In fact, we had budgeted accordingly in the 1112 year, anticipating that they would have gone through the rate study earlier and got approval through the Public Utilities Commission earlier than they did. Page three of the budget provides a listing of what the, a volume of water is that's being used by the two different systems, both in South Shore or Middle Bridge. We're expecting to have to purchase about 18.4 million cubic feet of water for the year to be able to supply those two systems. The, page four shows you how we're going to generate the rate base. We're looking at 2,754 units at $178. With the 5,000 cubic feet, we'll generate about 490,000 oversized meters. These are the meters, two inches to five inches, that may be used for fire protection or for large developments that have additional units associated with it, such as a Mary Carpenter's or at Waukamo Park, about $12,500. And additional units, those 580 additional units that tee off of the service lines, another $44,000. Excess sales will be billing at the $2.90, actually, I said the $2.91 rate, will generate about $184,000. So we'll generate the $734,000 in user fees for the year. We'll also, with the rate, be taking in the money from the attachment agreements from the various wireless providers that are on the towers. That's going to generate about $232,000. Then there's a sundry of smaller revenue sources. Most of those are for fee services rendered, installation of meters, installation of water lines, where there's a direct pay reimbursement by the customer if they take use of that service. Turn-on and turn-offs in this system is a big thing because there's so many seasonal users. So people, if we're going to go in and turn off the water or turn it on at the beginning of the next season, we're seeing revenues from that. One of the things that your enterprise funds also include, and if you look at the expenditure statement on W 6, you'll see at the very bottom, an expense for depreciation. Expense for depreciation on the utility funds are required because, from an accounting standpoint, you want to look at the infrastructure of what you own as a system, and then depreciate the value of what it loses over the course of the year by wear and tear and common use. So you have an expense of $183,000. Theoretically, once you have met your cost of depreciation on all capital, equipment, pipe installations, then when you need to replace those, you don't have to have a capital budget, because the money would be in retained earnings available to be able to be used for the replacement of, whether it's a pump or whether it's a replacement of a street line. So the, so you've got $183,000 in cost, which really has no direct relationship to the operating budget, other than the wear and tear expensed against all of the equipment that's used in the system itself. One thing I will mention, and it's in the budget message, is that we are most likely going to need to conduct either in-house or through a third-party contractor rate study for the water system, because we're going to have to convert, based on state statute, the method of billing in the 1314 year. Our method of billing now is to take the total cost of the operations of the system, set up a unit rate, and then an excess rate. Based on what the state is going to require, we're going to need to go to a quarterly billing system. It'll no longer be the single bill that we submit in the month of September. We'll have to submit four bills, which means we'll increase the costs associated with postage, we'll increase the costs of accounting for receiving four payments rather than receiving two payments. But one of the real issues that our water systems are going to experience difficulty with is that the objective of the state is to have a base rate for everybody. What does it cost to be able to send the bills out and to do the general administration? And then people would pay based on what the real cost of the transmission and the delivery of water to be. Well, that's fine if you have a year-round population, and you've got everybody using 5,000 to 7,000 cubic feet of water a year, or 10,000 cubic feet of water a year. An average house with two kids and two adults would probably use, and Alan will argue with me based on his actual use being at around 15,000, would be about a 10,000 cubic foot use on a family of four. What we're seeing at this point is that 87.8% of all of the customers within the two systems in the past year used less than 5,000 cubic feet of water. I'm sorry, less than 10,000 cubic feet of water. 60% were below 5,000. And when we looked at that, we have a system where, because there's so many seasonal units there, or underoccupied units for the entire year, and we have a requirement to have the water available for 365 days a year, that if we go to a base rate for just the administrative overhead, and that administrative rate may be like $100, then it means that the cost of the excess is going to be exceedingly high. And because there's so, because what we're going to see is that a bill right now goes out for $175 in the current year, and somebody gets 5,000 cubic feet of water. I would envision, doing some quick math on it, that that same house next year would probably end up paying in the area of $230. Conversely, the person that's here seasonally and using, say, 2,000 cubic feet of water would probably be seeing the $175 bill go down to $140 or $150. So I think that what we're going to need to do is to look at this for a rate study and determine what options are available for us to be able to provide proper billing in the 1314 year. It is a concern of mine because we aren't a typical system. The objective of the state is to try to reduce water consumption by increasing the cost of excess water. That may work fine if you're dealing with, you know, an urban area that's, that is, got a major year-round population. It's not going to work well for small water systems like Oz that have a seasonal population. We will be rewarding those people that really tax the system the most, because when we see the greatest water use is during the summer months. Fourth of July weekend, we may see a water demand of 1.2 to 1.3 million gallons. Our average purchase during the winter months may be somewhere in the area of 400,000 gallons. So the people that are going to be paying the least are the people that are taxing the system during those summer months. Anything that we do to reduce the cost there will then impact the year-round resident within the system. What those numbers will be is yet to be determined, because what we need is a better definition as to what would go into the base rate and what would go into the excess consumption rate. But this is the last year that we can provide the billing on a single-year bill and allow for two payments. It's now going to be a case of having to go with a quarterly bill based on the actual water that somebody has used, plus the base rate. So they're going to get a bill for $25 for the unit price, let's say if it was $100 for the quarter. If they're not here for the months of January, February, and March, that's what the bill would be. Even though the town is responsible for ensuring that if they come down in January and want to turn on the water, that the water is available for them to use. So it is a problem. We will have to address it before next January. One of the things I'm looking at with John at this point is whether or not we bring in a third-party consultant that does the water rate studies to give us a better idea on how we can meet what the state requirements are, and still be able to minimize the impact on all of the system users. I'm not suggesting that we want to have the small seasonal user pay more than they should be paying, but I also think that the virtue of having the water available 24/7/365, there needs to be some type of service recognition and cost associated with that. So we'll be looking at that next year, but, you know, with the meter reading systems that are in place now, we have much better control of the data, but having control of the data and seeing how those numbers will play out could have some profound impact on what the charges will be. It'll be a redistribution. It's almost like a revaluation, a redistribution. You'll still be raising the same revenue, but from indifferent loads based on the way people consume the water. John, anything else on water? If not, we'll move on to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Kathy, you may want to come up front. John, would you make her present the whole thing?
Sure.
The Wastewater Enterprise Fund, again, I think it's repetitive, but with the wastewater system, we operate a regional wastewater system on behalf of the university and on behalf of the, a portion of the town of Narragansett. The budget for the entire program, and again, this is for the services rendered to Narragansett and to the university, is at $3,240,138. Right now, the wastewater system serves 3,688 accounts with over 5,500 units that are tied into the system. We've seen sizable growth in the wastewater system over the past several years, particularly due to the developments off of Route 1 with both Wakefield Meadows and the South County Commons. At this point, we're treating approximately 1.1 billion gallons of wastewater a year, plus in another 4.5 million gallons of septic. There is more septic that could be taken into the plant than we can actually accommodate based on the size of our facility and the impact that the septic has on the raw sewage that has to be treated. The program increase of $38,891 is about a 1.2% increase. The, if you look on page WW3 of the program narrative, you'll see the distribution. The town of Narragansett's using about 45% of the plant's treatment services. The 44% URI is at about 19, and South Kingston's at about 36. Now, again, each of the components of the wastewater treatment program are based on wastewater flows. So the wastewater flows that go through the Kingston Pump Station would be shared in kind by the university and the town of South Kingston, and obviously not Narragansett. So if 80% of the flows going through Kingston are from the university, they're responsible for 80% of those costs. Each of the various components are broken out, and if we could just skip a couple of pages, if you go to page WW13, I think this is the most important page, because this shows how we come up with the cost sharing between the regional partners. The wastewater treatment system, again, is broken down by the different service elements. General treatment, sludge, the pumping stations, as well as local collection. We review what the cost is to provide the service for each of those elements. On the regional components, like the wastewater treatment plant, Narragansett's responsible for 44% of those costs, so if it's a $609,000 cost, they got to come up with $268,000. URI, since they're using 19% of the regional plant, they pay $116,000. And SK with the 223, because they've got 36%. If you look at the local collection system, Narragansett has zero, URI has zero, because obviously it's 100% South Kingston. Bottom line is that the overall operations of the wastewater treatment facility program would be at about $2.49 million next year. When we add the capital improvements in, we then have to divvy up the capital improvements based on who's getting benefit and use of it. That's also within this page 13 shot. Debt service, as you can see, is solely the South Kingston debt service, because anything that Narragansett's put in of a capital nature, they bond themselves. that Narragansett's put in of a capital nature, they bond themselves and it's through their program. So this is just the South Kingston component that's there. We then have to subtract the revenue that comes in from the septicage. So we subtract that, and that's based on the proportionality of where, of how much each are paying toward the regional treatment system itself, and then we come up with the cost shares. So for the 2012, 2013 year, we're looking that Narragansett will pay $5,247 less. SK will be up $36,000, and URI will be up $36,000 for the total of $62,000 over what the current year is. Now, when I say that these are the costs, these are forecast costs only. At the end of the fiscal year, we get the actual flow volumes through each of the plant components, and then Alan will compute from this table the actual flows and the actual expenses. So while we're forecasting $609,000 for general plant, if we only spend $580,000, if Narragansett's share isn't 44 but comes out to be 46, we would take 46% of that. So this is a budget document rather than what the actual expense statement is going to look like, obviously, but also from a revenue standpoint, it's different. When we dealt with the seniors program, those are hard costs. We're saying to people, this is what you're going to pay. We're not looking at what the actual expenses are at the end of the year. We're assigning costs on this because of the regional agreements that are in place. This flows based on what the actual costs are that are incurred. It's the FERRIS system. It's also one that, from a finance department perspective, is probably the most difficult to operate because it is, there are so many moving parts associated with it. Jumping back, the system is also one where we take great pride in the operations. The lateral collection system is cleaned on an annual basis, so we jet-clean the entire system at least once over a two-year period. This is very important because prevention is far, in terms of breakdown on pipelines or clogging with pipelines where it backs up in the basements, is something which is very expensive and a cost that we would incur. So it's good economy to have a strong operating program to ensure that your lines are open and that your pumping stations are adequate in size to be able to address the flow that's going through it. As the council's aware from the capital improvement program that we have in place, we're doing upgrades on both the Kingston Pump Station and the Silver Lake Pump Station to be able to provide both additional pumping capacity and also to be able to provide independent generative power sources to ensure that if we do have a period of no national grid interface, that we will still be able to continue to flow materials through that system rather than to have them back up. I think the closest we've ever come to an overflow was at the Silver Lake Pump Station where it had actually reached up two stories. And that was a time when we had to get the power restored to be able to get that system in place. We need to build the redundancy into the system, both from a power perspective and from a pumping perspective. You know, our systems look nice, but they are, in this time, 35 years old. So a lot of those pumps have got to a point of functional obsolescence. We're also continuing, as you can see in the budget document, the energy costs associated with operating the plant and the pumping stations are down again this year as they were in the current year. We are anticipating additional energy savings this year based on the energy aggregation agreement through the league because the wastewater program is the largest energy user in the town. John, what have I missed?
Other than, we talked about if the Riptis permit, which is Rhode Island Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, that's the permit that allows us to discharge treated effluent out to Block Island. It was adopted. Some of the good news is, some of the testing went down for fecal, but the bad news is we now have to test for enteric oxus. And the other thing that Kathy's working on now is, one of the other requirements is we now have to have a, this is unbudgeted, a continuous chlorine residual monitor.
John, can you get closer to that mic?
Sorry. One thing that is unbudgeted that was in the permit is we now are going to have to install a residual chlorine monitor. They want us to continuously monitor the residual chlorine levels in the effluent. So that's something we're working, Kathy's working with some vendors and trying to get that installed as expeditiously as possible to satisfy DEM.
I think the only other thing I haven't mentioned, or if I did stop me, was that there's another rate increase that's expected here. The current rates in place for residential unit is $225, and that's with a use, not of 5,000 cubic feet, of 10,000 cubic feet of volume within the base rate. That 225 for the 12, 13 year is forecast to go to $229, a $4 increase. We're also anticipating that the existing excess rate of $2.85 needs to be increased to $2.90 to be able to generate the rate revenue that's necessary to be able to support the system for the year for South Kingston's costs. Again, our rates are for South Kingston. Narragansett has its own billing system for customers that are served there, and URI has a general appropriation that they pay to us from, obviously they're not charging within the university facility itself. I mentioned the energy reductions. We're looking at about a 35, 350,000 kilowatt reduction in use for the year, and that's one of the reasons that we're seeing the energy reductions in each of the different codes. John, you want to talk about the energy improvements that have been completed?
Yep. Back, I believe, as of February 2010, we now have the new blower systems online. Kathy, you can maybe talk about them a little more than I can, the Eration blowers.
We have Neuro's blowers in there, high efficiency. They're using significantly less, I looked through the numbers, significantly less electricity. And we're also working on, running it on a DO, a dissolved oxygen mode, which will also save more money. But I had the energy people come in again because there may be a potential to save even more money, so I'm trying to get grants for, and even more. They're coming out with better blowers all the time because across the country, they're trying to make a, the wastewater plants use the most electricity across the country, so we're trying to make a smaller footprint, so they're trying to make more efficient blowers. So that's one of them. And the other project that we're working on to save energy, not electricity, but energy, is the boilers. The boilers have been put in, we're finishing up the piping, it should be done in a couple of weeks, so we're switching over from the oil to the natural gas.
That was also with a grant to bring the gas line in, as well as money from the Energy Office to be able to replace those units. So there's been considerable progress made in terms of, first, upgrading the equipment that needed to be replaced in the first place, but upgrading it with somebody else's money with equipment that's going to run more efficiently. So I think we've got a lot to be proud of in terms of that operation. Other questions as far as wastewater? Hearing none, we go from wastewater to solid waste. John, you want to walk us through it?
Yeah, there's really not a whole lot of change with the solid waste as far as the transfer station ops. I mean, as the council may recall, we awarded a contract extension with wastewater, the price is fixed, I believe, for the next three years on that contract for the tag users. Any commercial waste at the facility, that rate is set by, wastewater is seeking the most favorable tipping market. I think the thing that we probably want to touch on more is, is single-stream recycling. I actually have a meeting a week from Wednesday with Resource Recovery, and as far as an update, the council may or may not be aware, Resource Recovery is rehabbing their materials recycling facility, also known as the MRF, and the date is uncertain. I think they were shooting at April, I don't know if they're going to make that April date or not, where all recyclables, vis a vis the paper products or the containers, can now be commingled in a single container. And so what they're hoping for, what they see nationally is recycling rates are more favorable when people don't have, they don't have to think about it as much, so they're more inclined just to recycle more because they don't have to worry about segregating the containers from the paper products. And the new MRF will separate, you know, it already separates the containers now, but also will separate the paper products from the container. So we'll have somewhat of an update hopefully next week as to...
John, do you want to address the reduction in the tipping fees for Resource Recovery?
I'm sorry?
The Resource Recovery tip fee reduction, we're down $36,000, the reduction in the flow of materials going to the, this is based on an anticipated reduction in the amount of materials that are going up to the Resource Recovery facility.
Resource Recovery, they were, and they may change this again, but they keep ratcheting up the diversion rate. So if they ratchet up the diversion rate, that obviously means they give us less recyclables, and we are up to, I believe now, 35%. So they expect communities to divert 35% of your waste stream as recyclables. Now, with single-stream recycling, they haven't talked about increasing that, but I think they're hoping it's going to increase by virtue that people are going to recycle more. And again, the more people recycle, the more, I mean, the valuable commodity, and it's very fixed, is the capacity of landfill. You know, $32 a ton is still a very favorable municipal rate as compared to other states. So the longer they can preserve that capacity for municipal waste, I think it's going to be to everybody's benefit.
Paul?
Yeah. Will they now, John, take the three, four, and five?
Yeah, we've asked that question, and we haven't got a definitive answer. I think they're leaning towards, I believe, the way the, it's going to be set up, they can take the three through fives, but they haven't come out and officially told us that yet. I know it's a point of frustration for many people, they just say, what's wrong with it?
I can't see it. I get them in my magnifying glass.
That's what I do. Magnifying glass.
Couple of other things I wanted to point out is the solid waste budget is broken out into three different sections. One is the operation of the transfer station itself, and that's the $387,000 budget. The second component is the residential recycling, and this is the cost of having a part-time recycling coordinator, fringe benefits associated with that, and just general municipal expenses, and that's in at the $24,800. The third section is an important section because this is paying for past costs. This is the cost of the super fund closeouts. You've got two super funds in town that have both been closed out, one at Rose Hill and one at Plains Road. At this point, what we've got within this budget program is the debt service that's associated with the super fund bonds that are outstanding, as well as what the cost, the ongoing maintenance costs are for us to continue to work with both EPA and DEM as far as well-testing, legal services, or consulting services that may be necessary. So those three components add up to the $683,000. If you look at page SW4, SW4 shows you where your revenues are coming from, and the operations to deal with the transfer operating system, those revenues are there, but when you look at the bottom, you see the super fund reserve transfer. That $181,000 is being used to pay the principal and interest expenses associated with the bonds that are outstanding. We will not probably have super fund reserve funds over the next several years that will continue to be able to pay that debt service. We do have a million dollars that's assigned within the general fund specifically for use on closeout of those landfills. We haven't touched that. I think the authorization on that goes back probably five years?
At least, yeah.
At least five years, but there'll be another million dollars. So once the reserve fund is down, what Alan will have to do is to transfer the dollars from general fund balance into the solid waste reserve fund as a means of being able to continue to service that debt because you've got two separate bonds there. One from a million dollars on Rose Hill, and the other one was, I think, around $400,000, was it?
About $900,000.
On West Kingston.
That was $900,000.
$900,000. So you're capturing all of the costs that are related to solid waste, not just the current cost of operating the transfer station, but also providing the general community as far as the residential recycling and the costs associated with the super fund, ongoing maintenance, and debt service.
The only other thing I wanted to point out was there is an added benefit to recycling because last year, 2010, 2011, we recycled 2,873 tons, and we get a profit sharing now from Resource Recovery. That was $22,580. In this past year, 11, 12, we got $60,128. It rides the market. Right now, the recycling market's strong, so there is an added benefit. The more we recycle, if the market stays strong, hopefully we'll get additional profit sharing from Resource Recovery.
$3.50? $9.50. Alan says that that bond was $9.50 on Plains Road, as well as the million dollars on Rose Hill, $2 million on Rose Hill. But those are both being serviced there, and they will be serviced for several years to come.
I just have a few questions, Steve. Has the tank arrived yet for the grease? And how is that working out? Has that been successful?
I mean, it's only been up there a week or so, so it's, you know, we're yet to see it pick up, but I think we'll do fine. I think we're going to try to get some block ads in the paper about it.
Okay. All right. Andy, is there any incentives out there for businesses to recycle?
By state law, businesses are supposed to recycle. Now, you know, to me, I always encourage wherever they have to pick up their solid waste, to put a container there for cardboard. I think a lot of businesses do that. But I think at this point, the state just doesn't have the staff to enforce commercial recycling. I think it's a good thing, like, we would certainly encourage it, but, you know, I don't know if there's a whole lot of resources out there for commercial businesses.
A lot of the problems with the commercial recycling at this point is that businesses are not set up with a space capacity to be able to have the separated loads, and they're not set up with the commercial hauler trucks to be able to accommodate those without paying higher fees. And without the inspection or regulation going at the state level, we're just not seeing a lot of activity in that area.
Maybe the single stream would help that issue along. It would be easier.
Well, again, well, the problem with commercial is they're prohibited from going to the MRF. The MRF is strictly for municipal recyclables, so, you know, there's still this very strong paper market and cardboard market, and aluminum, probably glass for, you know, for bars, where there's very little or no market for glass, but paper's still strong and aluminum's strong.
Any other questions?
I have one. Has, and I know that you're probably working on this with some type of grant, has there any monies that you can see for lighting for that town parking lot on Main Street? Anything surfacing?
At this point, I would say, I'm not aware that there is any.
Any questions here at the table? Going to ask if there's any questions from the audience. I want to thank John and Kathy, Steve and Alan, and Andy, all of the town staff here tonight, thank you for attending and all of your hard work and efforts. Other than that, no further questions. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.